Good evening, everyone. We call this regularly scheduled business meeting of the Gettysburg Planning Commission to order at 7:02 PM on today, January 21st. Thank you for being here on this very cold evening. Our first item is to convene the meeting, which I have done, and now reorganization. And it occurs to me that I did not check with you on how this process goes, and I forget, did someone take over while we organize?
That would be me.
Okay, great. So I hand things over to our solicitor.
I wasn't going to stop you from calling the meeting to order. Yeah, so because this is your first meeting of the year, you need to do your very brief reorganization, which essentially consists of electing your chair, and then on down from there. So if there are any nominations for the position of chair, I can entertain those?
I'll make a motion to nominate Charles Strauss as chair of the Planning Commission.
Do you accept?
I do. Second.
Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, I will consider those closed. All those in favor of Charles Strauss serving as chair of the Planning Commission for 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign no. Meeting is yours.
Okay, thank you, Adam. So now we will take nominations for the position of vice chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Nick Redman.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second from John, motioned and Sarah seconded to nominate Nick Redman. Are there other nominations, or just discuss this motion?
Technically, you don't take a motion for nomination, but it's okay. I would just ask if there are any others?
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, then let's vote on Nick Redman as our vice chair. Please, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do I vote? Do I abstain?
You're in.
Okay.
I think you can do either, but it's unanimous vote. And now finally, for the position of secretary. Are there nominations for secretary of the Planning Commission?
I nominate Sarah Kipp. I'll second.
Okay, are there other nominations? Okay, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Sarah Kipp as secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have our three officers. Do we have to, I don't see it on the agenda, but I should ask if we have to say anything about advertising meetings for this year? Or they've already been advertised?
They've been advertised with the Borough Secretary.
Okay, thanks. All right, so now we move to reviewing and approving the agenda. I'll note that our agenda begins with the minutes from December 16th. There's public comment restricted to items on our agenda. Tabled old business, we have none. And we only have one item of new business, which is to move forward on the Planning Commission recommendation to Borough Council. Though it states here that we will approve this this evening, it's likely that we still have discussion amongst ourselves and questions for John, and that we will not arrive at a motion today, but that we will continue to look at what we have in front of us and what more clarification we need before we make that recommendation. So I don't know how it will go, but I think, given that we received things later last week and still wanting to understand it and ask questions, that we would not have a motion today. But that item is on new business, so everyone is free to speak to it. Then announcements and additional comments from Planning Commission before final public comment, and then adjournment. Are there any corrections to the agenda?
The announcement for the next Planning Commission meeting says Tuesday, February 21st, which I don't think is a Tuesday.
It's not Tuesday.
So is it the 18th, the day after President's Day?
Yes, the agenda should have indicated Friday, yeah. Tuesday, February 18th to account for the President's Day holiday.
Any other corrections to the agenda? I'd like to make one suggestion that maybe, I don't know where you want to put this, John, but either under new business or under announcements. Could we have any updates on things that you foresee crossing our desks here as far as land development or subdivision in the coming months? Just so we can understand how we're going to wrap up this rezoning and start potentially discussion on land development. Where would you like to do that?
We could probably, I'd recommend doing that in the additional comments from Planning Commission.
Okay, then we don't have to change the--
Just direct comments to me, and we can have a discussion.
Okay, so then we don't have to change the agenda. Great, just signaling that that might be coming. All right, all those in favor of approving our agenda this evening, please, oh no, is there a motion to approve our agenda this evening?
I move to approve the agenda.
And a second? Okay, so Marty moved and John seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Our December 16th meeting minutes, are there any corrections or questions about those minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so Sarah moved and John seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the minutes pass unanimously. We now have opportunity for public comment. I want to again thank the residents who have pitched in to cover this and have it filmed for community media. So with that in mind, please stand at the podium, state your name and address, and let us know what you are thinking about our only item of new business, which is rezoning.
I live at 314 North Stratton Street. The Borough Council is supposed to follow the 2019 Central Adams Joint Comprehensive Plan when they're adopting a zoning ordinance. The changes listed below don't reflect the plan recommendations for the Carlisle Street corridor in Gettysburg. The plan recommendations for the Carlisle Street corridor specifically and Water Street, West Lincoln area retain a mixture of non-residential uses, especially along Carlisle Street. Encourage smaller-scale retail, office, restaurant, and similar uses primarily oriented toward the needs of the college community. And the next one says, retain a range of residential uses, particularly along East Water Street, North Stratton Street, and West Lincoln Avenue. What has been proposed in this rezoning is to do away with, Carlisle Street is currently zoned residential office, which allows all those types of things I just mentioned. It's proposed to remove that and change it to residential modern density, excuse me. You would have the loss of low-impact commercial and cultural uses such as cafes, museums, et cetera. Historically, this corridor has had the same zoning as Baltimore Street, which is now designated Historic Corridor Neighborhood Commercial NC-2. Why not make Carlisle Street the same zone as Baltimore Street? Historic Corridor Neighborhood Commercial. Both have large historic structures and are on a major pedestrian vehicle corridor. Second thing they decided to do was insert those non-residential uses that are on Carlisle, put those into the R2 zone. Bed and breakfast was one that was deleted from R2 by Borough Council in 2019 because they compete with housing needs. Motel, funeral home, student housing and institutional student housing, which includes fraternities and sororities, which are in institutional, and they are included in the revitalization zone. They don't belong in R2. Another thing that was inserted into the R2 residential zone was general commercial service uses, mixed-use building, that allows a general commercial use on the first floor with residential above. That's not a traditional form in R2 and would compete with residential units. It's a good idea in general commercial, but not in R2, and it is proposed in general commercial. The new ordinance, I've put the definition there for Historic Corridor Neighborhood Commercial, and I suggested that they make it apply to Carlisle Street as well. And there's a definition of moderate-density residential district, which says that residential neighborhoods that contain a mix of attached two-family houses and detached residential dwellings, but it also allows multifamily dwellings, not just two families, so that's probably something you need to insert. The R2 zoning district is an important factor in providing a range of housing types to a broad spectrum of people. In my neighborhood, there are all ages, economic levels, and everything from single-family, duplexes, to apartments. We also have a senior living facility. R2 generally provides a good neighborhood environment where people of all backgrounds and needs can have a decent, safe place to live. There is no reason to insert commercial uses into such an important residential element of the borough, and this would be borough-wide. Carlisle Street is not similar to the R2 in the existing uses or structures. The comp plan recommends that it is the place for small-scale retail, office, and restaurants, and describes it as a downtown corridor. This proposed change needs to be rethought and undone. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, additional comment?
Hi, Sharon Michaels, 120 York Street. I'm here to address two items. One is the shrinking of Old Town by virtue of creating new zones, particularly the NC-1, and in the second block of York in particular, because that's the area I know the best. And secondly, the development of industrial endeavors within the densely populated borough. Prior to making my comments, I want to assure you that I do so in a manner I deem to promote the common good. After a lifetime of not-for-profit work in the community to benefit the people of Gettysburg, it was said to me that some people will have to bite the bullet for the common good, a reference to the residents who will be harmed by the proposed rezoning. I make my statements based on what I think will be best for Gettysburg, my friends and neighbors, not just for myself. Although I and my husband are among those who may be negatively impacted by the shrinking of Old Town, and certainly, along with a good deal of the population, we could be impacted by a toxic spill or release. The purposes of the rezoning, as stated in the 2025 zoning ordinance, are noble and worthy of pursuit. However, the housing-driven approach to reaching the objectives are problematic. The changes to the zoning primarily are, as stated, driven by the need for additional housing in Gettysburg. Is there a need beyond what is currently being developed? That is questionable. The 2020 comprehensive plan for our three township area project data, project a need for around 600 units by 2027 in this area. Currently under construction within two miles of Lincoln Square are 639 apartments and 750 single-family homes, and that's not including the 186 apartments at the Carlisle Station. The comprehensive plan calls for a housing density of 12 dwelling units per square acre. Gettysburg is almost in some, with the new proposed development of the Carlisle Station, 25 times the national average for population density. So it seems a legitimate question to ask and receive an answer based on accurate data as to whether or not we need more housing, particularly when decisions that will have an adverse effect on property owners is afoot. So let's talk about the shrinking of Old Town. John, is it possible for you to put up the map, the revised map? No? Okay. If you, so if you look at current Old Town and the proposed map, you'll notice that there are several areas, although still in the historic area and still subject to HARB, that are being proposed to be NC-1 neighborhood commercial. Although several areas are impacted, I want to concentrate on the 100 block, which is the second block from the square of York, as that is where I live and what I know best. Historically and currently, this block has been Old Town with a mix of residential and commercial. Currently, there are Airbnbs, a publication office, childcare, temporary shelter, church, hairdresser apartments, and single-family. The block is visually and practically part of Old Town, as you can see down the block, all the way, all the Old Town buildings and the square, when you come around the bend there at the Sunoco and you look down York Street. Parking meters line both sides of the street and are used consistently by tourists and by shoppers. This block has so much more in common with the first block of the square than it does with when you go around the bend at Liberty by the Sunoco. That bend, traffic light announces you are now in Gettysburg. Many of the owners bought these properties and have maintained them for years with the expectation that as Old Town prospered and grew, the buildings would be commercial or mixed, just as is in the block now and the block up. The rezoning, if passed, would make them residential or residential-mixed apartment below, above, commercial below. So commercial use of the building would not be allowed in the entire building. These buildings, in many instances, either by design or because of their proximity to the street and on-street parking, are more suitable for commercial use. The amount of traffic on York and the constant in and out of street parking for commercial purposes makes them less than ideal for residential use. So I put forth that in the absence of a dire need for housing, would they not be better used to help grow a vibrant downtown historical area? And then why negatively impact property owners? Many of them who have owned these buildings long-term and kept them up, there is no need and there is a better use, at least for the ones that front onto the street or block from Lincoln Square. It's short-sighted. It may also put these buildings at risk as values are affected and livability goes down compared to new builds. One further note about this block, with the rezoning, it is not slated for any beautification or safety upgrades. The block of York Street between Liberty and Stratton is dark, dark. Porch lights do not help. Persons parking to go to town to eat, shop cannot safely exit or enter their cars or use the sidewalks. Someday, I'm afraid, someone will be injured and/or killed when hit by a car as they are entering or exiting. So at the least, streetlights would be a great improvement there. My second comment, I will try to keep brief, it is in regards to the industrial area, which I have addressed previously. Given the amount of toxic material that moves through Gettysburg by train or truck, having industrial development, which encourages truck or rail traffic loading and unloading and/or, and manufacturing of anything that requires toxic materials, chemicals, and/or processes, is, I think, irresponsible in a mile point seven square that is densely populated. The train derailment in East Palestine in 2023 became a toxic spill that made more than one mile square unlivable. That's more than half of the borough. There are other areas in Adams County without the population density that would be more appropriate for this activity, which could create jobs. Also, if a need for housing does arise in the future, think about how much housing could be built in that area. Thank, I'd like to thank John Whitmore for answering my questions ways properly and for the Planning Commission for giving us a lot of opportunity to have input.
Thank you. Ms. Michaels. Final opportunity here for public comment, round one. Okay, then let us move now to discussion of the Gettysburg zoning ordinance, chapter 27. In order to kick this off, I wanted to say a few things very briefly, then turn it to John Whitmore to update us on what he shared with us in the community in the last weeks, and then propose a way of doing this today and at the next meeting. So the first thing is, for anyone watching this at home, or for those of you in the room, it seems like we are at a point where we've spent a considerable, considerable amount of time, and yet there are some lingering questions and concerns by some very committed residents who come to meeting after meeting. And so my suggestion to the group up here is that as we listen to what our staff has recommended and sent to us by email, that we also recognize, and I'll share what these are in a minute, those lingering questions and concerns, that though we've talked about them at several meetings, that it is not in the minds of some residents, at least, resolved in the best way possible. That doesn't mean that we're going to all agree on what that resolution is, but I do believe that because we have been receiving consistent comments in a few areas, that it's worth our time to return to those, even though we've already discussed them. So that's going to be my proposal when we finish listening to John, that we consider these resident concerns that continue to surface. At the same time, I know that Borough Council is most likely ready to take this from us. And at a recent meeting that I watched on community media, the council chair said that they are prepared to look at this ordinance line by line. So that's very thorough review for us all to have done that, and then for them to have to do it as well. So I appreciate that they're ready to start looking at this. And then finally, I note that John and the staff have continually given us their recommendations, and in almost all cases, we've agreed with them, and in some cases, we have not. And so the ordinance that you see in front of you, that draft, reflects some areas where we accepted staff recommendation and a very few areas where we did not. So that's the first thing I just wanted to propose, that we're almost there, but I personally don't believe we're there yet, and that we should consider the remaining concerns that are being aired. The second thing I wanted to say is that I think that when we give this to council, that there are going to be three things that immediately emerge as questions or even controversies, and there are going to be more people coming to meetings around these three things. So I share them because I think that the Planning Commission should just be extra careful in the way we present these three things to Borough Council, like with our ideas and our evidence and why we think this is the best possible, even though we know some of these are controversial. And the first one is questions related to the need for additional housing in Gettysburg. This seems to come up over and over. It was in the paper, it's been discussed here, it is in our comp plan, it's in comments made by John and others, that we have a housing need. And then there is debate about that. How much housing need? Where should it be? What type of housing? So my first suggestion is that this group at least comes up with some kind of rationale about how we see this issue, since it's been raised so many times and it's connected to so many of our decisions. Secondly, the height of our buildings and the population density in our neighborhoods and the concept related to revitalization. I think those three things go together. How high do we want our buildings so that developers can return a profit, but what is built to human scale? How dense do we want our neighborhoods? And then what are the ways that we incentivize revitalization? That seems to be the second thing that keeps returning as a topic in the paper, in discussion with residents here, and public comment. And then finally, what are the district boundaries and what uses are permissible in them? We've spent a lot of time on R1, we've spent a little less time on R2, and those items keep returning. So are we confident in the way we've established these boundaries and what uses we've put in them? So that's the second thing I want to share. If we maybe think about those three items, because no doubt, they will continue to be items once council receives this, and it seems to me it should be our job to do as good of a job as we can in explaining how we came to this. And then finally, and this could be debated, but real quick, I'm just going to list the six items that I think are still lingering, that I hear from the public or that I've just thought myself. The first one, Carlisle Street corridor, related to R2, and is R2 have the appropriate uses in it? And does the Carlisle Street belong in R2? Second, maximum parking. What did we arrive at related to maximum parking limits? Three, the West Middle Street zoning district, where does it belong? Again, we resolved some of these, but they continue to surface. So I just want to make sure that we're still confident in all of our decisions. So three is the West Middle Street corridor and what district it belongs in. Four, to build two lines, and have those been appropriately resolved related to how it looks on the page and how it's going to operate in real life? We just heard comment related to this. Number five, the NC-1 district, replacing part of Old Town District, particularly on York, second block of York. And finally, industrial, I think the phrase was industrial endeavors in the borough, but the appropriateness of having, I guess the question is, an industrial district close to residential districts and the safety of that. Now, all six of these, we've discussed at multiple meetings, and I'm sure that the staff and the council are ready to move on from them. I just want to be sure that we're all comfortable. Okay, so those are all the things I wanted to start off this section with. But now, John, do you want to explain where we've come from the last meeting on December 16th?
Staff, let's see, the initial version came out December 19th with substantial changes established at that December 18th meeting. There were some additional changes made last week after an issue was found specifically with the, oh shoot, the mixed-use building concept. So that's, I'll just start with that. With the, let me pull it up. Maybe I'll pull it up. So general commercial mixed-use building, this was staff's attempt to create the land use as established, we discussed, Mr. Redman had brought up, the idea of having some form of commercial activity permitted in the R2 district, as the R2 district does allow for larger building scale, building form, and there are examples of some commercial activity. Generally, it's going to be retail and/or restaurant-focused, first, on the first floor of the building, so it's then not going to be just a commercial structure to emphasize the residential nature of these blocks. So staff defined this as a special land use classification, which incorporates any general commercial uses, such as those listed, and they're listed right above, and those are on the, or general, and a residential land use. Now, it says residential here, that was also corrected in the newest version. All non-residential land uses shall only be permitted to occur on the first floor, while residential uses may only, may occur throughout the structure. Total gross floor area of the non-residential land uses shall not exceed the total gross floor area of the residential land uses occurring in a general commercial mixed-use building. That provision would therefore ensure that it's going to still have at least a 50/50 residential split, as opposed to still being a commercial structure, maybe with just a studio or something attached to it. So something that would not necessarily be in keeping with the character of the R2 district areas. The, other than that, staff, let's see, we came up with the shorthand outs to provide just general information regarding the issues, not issues, but the thrust of the document, specifically the changes as they relate to imaging and ordinance language related to land uses, but then also more so about the zoning map changes. This information, if it's acceptable, we can do a little bit of formatting, but then have it put out on our Facebook and our social media pages, website, and just to provide that information to council as well as the general public. With the, going back really quick though, to the general commercial mixed-use building, that was going to, that is proposed to be a special exception in the R2. That was something that came up quite a bit when we were discussing a few of these land uses in the R2 district, allowing for the use, but then having it as the conditions to ensure that the building form and the actual congestion associated with some of these land uses is better controlled, or at least identified and provided with remedy. Other than that, trying to think what other substantial change happened. Other than that, trying to think what other substantial change happened. As it relates to build two lines, that had been incorporated with the assistance of the borough engineer to get to a standard where we're utilizing the front parcel boundary, what that actually is, and then establishing that the, creating a yard, what that means. Let's see, build two. So, let's see, yes, the language you would now read, build two lines are hereby established from the front parcel boundary, where there is no curb, that needs to be a change then. Except as specifically provided in other sections of this chapter, no building shall be placed in the area between the build two line and the parcel front line of demarcation or otherwise identified lot frontage, except as permitted, and that's in permitted in section E, which is whenever the majority of the existing buildings on a block face have non-conforming build two lines, then you're allowed to have a modification at the discretion of the zoning officer. But it's, you can still, trying to have to put that, in no case shall the build two line be less than that of the adjacent building. Where is the, the language throughout the document, especially in the imaging related to the individual zoning districts, that has been updated. Where is it? So yeah, with that, principal buildings, we provide that build two lines as provided. And we avoid the use of front setbacks with principal buildings, only utilizing that language for the accessory buildings.
Okay. And thank you for getting out that draft so quickly after our last meeting. I do recall now that you did get out December 19th.
Well, and it's, it was, with the holiday, I mean, it has been a little bit challenging making sure information is being correct. We've, we identified some changes, comments we received from the public, specifically related to the mixed-use building, we were able to have those changes put into effect for you tonight. At this point though, we are at, I mean, we're at a point where staff feels confident that you could provide a positive recommendation with this document if there are any additional changes. We can definitely go through these six items, but it's something where we feel that, staff feels that it's there, and that it would be something where, it's at a stage where it can proceed to the public hearing by Borough Council. Naturally, if there are any provisions within the ordinance you want to see changed, and we're at that stage too, is we're, I say we're at the finish line.
Gotcha.
If we want to do it in February, that's not a problem, but we do have, the drafting would be minimal, I believe.
Okay. So I want to turn this to the commission to consider this where it is now, but just to repeat my appeal, which is that I don't think anything new has surfaced in quite a while. Most of the items have been around for a while. And with the holiday and just the busyness of December and early January, I personally don't feel confident enough to see that each of the items that we weighed in on and attempted to resolve have been actually resolved. And there's still a few areas that seem to me could be improved. That said, I'm just one person here, so I want to, I don't, I'm not suggesting, and I didn't put it on the agenda, that we go through each of those six items. Those were the six things that just still are on my list. But I want to leave it to the commission, and I don't know, maybe the best way would be to go from Nick down this line here, and first suggest where you think we are in this, and if any of those six items or other items are still keeping you up, and you want to do some work on it, and then see where we are. And then finally, could it be that if we decide to do this in February and take another month, that over this month, that the Planning Commission members read it very carefully, and then send you any final thoughts that could be teed up for discussion on Friday, I mean, in February?
That would be appreciated. Additionally, what we can do is, after tonight's meeting, we'd be at a stage where we can write the formal, if it makes sense to have a, how do I put this, resolution from the Planning Commission establishing why you are passing this ordinance, to justify that information to council. Staff can get that worked up this week as well.
Okay, okay. So let's first, we need to hear what everyone thinks about where we are in the process, given what I've said and what John said and what you are thinking. Nick, do you have any thoughts to begin?
Just about the general process.
Yeah, well, what you think about the six items I mentioned, or any of them still on your mind, or there are others on your mind? What do you think of the document as it is right now?
I think on one hand, I'm feeling pretty good about it. I appreciate that there's been some concerns raised, and to Charles's point, you know, we've heard them before, and I think, I hope I've expressed my opinion on things and where I'm coming from with some of those, in terms of, you know, why I see a need for housing, my thoughts on kind of Carlisle Street, things like that. I'm happy to reiterate those. At the same time, I mean, I think to your point about the holiday and one more month of review, I mean, you know, I don't see a con for that. I mean, I know Borough Council would like to get this, but, I mean, I don't like, is there another agenda item that they want to do that then, you know, we're delaying, I guess would be the question? Because we're, you know, independent of that, I think giving us and, you know, the public, you know, another month to kind of just, with the intention that, hey, this is the expectation, this is kind of the last chance you'll have in this forum. I do also want to point out though to everyone here, that obviously, there are going to be plenty of times for public input, you know, once the Borough Council has this as well. So I think when we talk about our end of our process, it is certainly not an end to the public comment, and I look forward to being a member of the public at that point, and, you know, coming to Borough Council sessions and meetings. So I think, I'm feeling good about the document. I think there's a couple of tweak, little tweaks that I certainly would want to bring up, just, you know, two or three things that are not, I think, huge. But overall, I mean, I think we've talked about a lot of it, and I mean, I feel good about where we're at. I don't necessarily personally agree with all of it, but I think we've come to consensus on pretty much all the items.
Thanks, Nick.
I appreciated your kind of outlining some items that we need to return to, and I would be in favor of spending another month, kind of going through with a fine tooth comb. I mean, I think there's a lot of information here, and I think it's easy to overlook things, and even, you know, when someone's speaking about an issue and trying to go through the districts and seeing what uses are permitted or not, I think it's, I mean, it's almost like every time you look at it, you see something new, or there's something, a new consideration. So I would be in favor of having one more month to review the document.
Thanks, Sarah. Marty? Or John?
Well, personally, I agree with Sarah. I think we could use the extra month for consideration of the questions we're dealing with, and, and I feel good about what we've done so far, but I would appreciate the extra time.
Thank you, John. Marty?
I like your outline. I think those were six excellent points, and if we can cover them all today, I think that would be great. But I'd also like to, you know, show some respect to John, our planner, and move things along for his sake and for council's sake, too.
Thank you, Marty. John, do you have any thoughts?
The February timeframe actually isn't too bad. What we would be able to do, staff would still be able to have this teed up for the February Borough Council workshop session, assuming it would be approved in February or at a stage where it's approved, we wouldn't have to wait until March for the Borough Council to initialize their review. There is the public hearing process that comes with the actual recommendation, so staff is totally okay with an additional month to review it. But one thing to keep in mind, many of the substantial changes that are being recommended have the potential to really, I wouldn't say create conflict within the document, but just the example of the mixed-use building, I mean, that does change the nature of the R2 district. So, we have to, we have to be at a stage where, at some point, this is going to be acceptable for Borough Council, is it? And I think, I think we're there, but naturally, an additional month won't hurt anything.
Just to kind of pick up on that, I think you want to be mindful of, lots of times, in many places, this ordinance is interconnected with each other. You know, there's cross-references, and you don't want to create, you don't want to create an issue inadvertently by addressing something in one place and then realizing at the 11th hour, or day before the meeting perhaps, that there's other things that need to be changed, or that you might want to change as a result of that.
That's good advice, thank you. Okay, so that sounds like it's unanimous to return to this after some more careful reading over the next month, keeping in mind that no item lives alone, that it's connected to other items. Now, Marty, you mentioned trying to do these this evening. What does the group think about these six items? Is there, let me repeat them and see if any of them, John, you want to speak to first as taken care of, and you want to show us how. But there are some, the ones that surfaced again tonight during public comment remain, you know, in my mind at least, and perhaps we won't resolve it tonight, but we've said that at many meetings, or we've partly resolved it, or we've resolved it and then returned to it. But let me repeat them again, and just ask the Planning Commission if you want to start with any of these, after John says what he would like to say about any that might have been already accomplished. The first one relates to Carlisle Street and what is appropriate for the R2, and whether Carlisle Street actually belongs in a different district and free R2 from some of the uses that were put into it to accommodate places like Carlisle Street. Second is maximum parking. Third is the West Middle Street district, related to Four Square Gospel Church and some other properties on the one side of Carlisle. Fourth are the build two lines. Fifth is the replacement of some sections of Old Town with, or NC1 taking over some blocks in the Old Town District. And then finally, industrial district. Does anyone of those six have one that you think, John, did you want to say any of those six that you believe?
I could probably address the industrial zoning one really quickly. We have to provide, we being the borough of Gettysburg, has to provide the ability for every land use to occur. You cannot discriminate against any particular land uses. What we initially looked at with regards to the industrial zoning district was to increase the areas of abutting the railroad tracks. The justification for that request was the understanding that a railcar is going to create, well, while it's going to have its own problems associated with it, it's taking trucks off the road. And that is something that is a huge concern to the community. So, that's what we were trying to do. When there was pushback against that, the modification was made for those parcels to remain as a general commercial. The only expansion of the industrial district is the area, I'm trying to zoom into it here. Pull up the parcels, I apologize. So it is this parcel right here, all in one ownership, which we attempted to avoid situations where parcels have mixed zoning classifications. It's the bulk of the structure and use is in an industrial zone now. So, for all intents and purposes, there is an expansion of industrial, but there's also the exact same zoning map coming into the existing zoning district boundaries, with the exception of one parcel that was split-zoned. That's what staff is not recommending, changes to industrial.
Any reactions to what John just shared about this district? Okay, let's still keep it in mind as we read the draft one more time. I don't think we're, we're not voting, we've always tried to come to consensus, but let's just keep it in mind as we move to more reading. What about build two lines? Why don't we take care of that? Because you have put considerable work into that.
So we ran to questions regarding, specifically in particular, we had concerns about how we're defining the front of the parcel, like the front yard, what's actually feasible within that space, how is it being defined? If you want to give me a few moments, I'll be able to pull that up. But we had a discussion, I'll pull up the email actually, we being myself, Chad, I believe even Sue may have been on that email chain, just to discuss the problem as it is. So, so yeah, we were having, so Chad brings this up before the meeting in December, we were having problems with, what are we trying to do with build two lines?
I was just curious how it looks in the draft since our meeting in December.
So, as it is, as it's changed, I should say, let me pull this up again. So as is currently defined, a build two line is a building location line where the primary facade of a building is required to be constructed, usually in alignment with other buildings on the block, or a line parallel to or measured at a distance from the street curb line. Further, in terms of the build two lines, there are supplemental regulations that create the, I guess, the issue. And where is it? Okay, so, build two lines are hereby established from the existing curb line of all existing and proposed public streets within the borough, or at the edge of the paved cartway if there is no curb. Except as specifically provided in other sections of this chapter, no building shall be placed in the area between the build two line and any street curb line, except as permitted on subdivision 2D, which is below, involving proposed public streets, build two lines shall be as shown in the land development plan. On a corner lot, there's specific requirements. Each district had its own build two line measurement from the curb line. These provisions are relatively intact. The issue, where is it? Is, we've tried to solve it, I should say, with this language, which, yeah. So, due to distance requirements, whenever the majority of existing buildings, there's the block face, four foot. So yeah, the build two line may vary up to four feet for projection, that we've kept that. The build two line may vary with a recess of the setback building, so you could have a dynamic where it's moving in conformity with the built environment, but the real changes occur in the actual districts. changes occur in the actual districts. As it is with the current, as proposed, they have our setbacks establishing build-two line from the front of the parcel boundary. So this case, principal building in the R2 district, it has to be, you have a 10-foot minimum distance from that curb line, 10 feet in front of the building. You're able to modify that based on the built environment around the building, so you can, you're allowed to make a request to the zoning officer.
If you could show us where that is, this rule.
So in the build-two line section. Yeah, so whenever the majority of the existing buildings on a block faces subsection E, have non-conforming build-two lines, build-two line for new buildings shall be modified to conform to such majority at the discretion of the borough zoning officer. In no such case will the build-two line be less than that of any adjacent building. So that, you create a situation then where by default, you're not going to have broken teeth, so to speak, with the built environment, yards that are inconsistent. Previously, I can, let me pull up one of the older drafts.
It can create a rather boring, boring environment as well. If you have different setbacks, it creates a little more texture and visual interest. So just thought I'd mention that. You could get that between zoning districts, I suppose, but.
Okay, so previously, we had build-two lines as, established as a front parcel, oh wait, hell, this one, I apologize. I am not going further, far back enough. What we've tried to do is avoid the situation where you have a setback and a build-two line requirement whereby it's just, we're calling it just a build-two line requirement. Yeah, the idea being situations where houses are so far setback that you'd have inordinate yards is going to be something where we're trying to limit that possibility. Unfortunately, zoning, we do get to, conformity is what's usually encouraged. And it's also, has the effect in protecting our historic, historic assets from development that abuts, that abuts those structures that may detract from the physical, those physical Overall, this, what we've tried to do is we've tried to take the standard approach in having the opportunity for, I don't know if it's through the opportunity, we've taken the standard approach in that you have, it's a general front setback standard. You could, you, the other issue we were having with the, I guess, general build-two lines was having front fences, fences within the front of the parcel boundary. Those, we believe are addressing this in that, A, yes, you can have a fence, but it's got to be the four feet. Let me pull that up. I'm making riveting television right now.
You're looking for the most recent version?
I just pulled up the most, yeah. So yeah, fences shall not exceed four feet in height in the front yard area between the street right-of-way and the required building setback or build-two lines. So we've hopefully addressed that issue in a manner that's sufficient to still have some form of requirement for a front setback.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. If you could be brief, Sue.
I did review this in the red line thing, and I think did pretty well, but with the fences, for example, you've still got, if you have an existing structure, this is not addressed as far as where the front yard is. It's a, like, the front yard in the build-two part is still defined as from the build-two line to the curb or whatever. It leaves that part between the building and the build-two line. So I did, I think, left it home, but I did some suggested language or at least address where there's an existing building. The front yard is between the building and the street.
That is something that came up last month, but would you be amenable to anything that protects that?
We thought we had addressed that.
With?
With the changes we've made.
Yeah, I'm confused what the issue is, personally. I think this looks good.
But are we still back, where, where do we resolve the fact that there's this open space perhaps between the building and the build-two line?
That's the front yard then.
Okay, so in the front yard language.
But it's an existing building, that's Sue's point.
Right. There's a gap between the building and the setback or build-two line, and that's been my question or issue from the beginning.
So you're saying if a building already exists in R1, let's say, and there is a build-two line in R1 of 25 feet, you're saying that if the building is 35 feet back right now, what is the concern about that 10 feet?
The fact that, in the definitions, it has, I think consistently said that the 25-foot build-two line from there to the street is your front yard. I'm just saying you need to put in something about where there's an existing building, the front yard is between the building and the street.
So essentially, if the front yard, if, if the existing house sits back further than the proposed build-two line, that the front yard would be extended, would be kind of either 25 feet or the greater of the distance between the existing house and the street.
So you'd be concerned that, that 10 feet is kind of no man's land and you couldn't build a fence there if you wanted to?
Well, if it says you can't have a fence that's more than four feet tall in your front yard.
You could put it there and have it be higher?
Okay.
So it's like an unregulated space?
Gotcha, thank you.
But you did pretty well.
What do you think, John?
We can, okay, with that, we have the, the further definitions of build-two line and front yard. It sounds like establishing the front yard, we just need to say, instead of using the build-two line language for front yard, a yard nearest to the street extending the full width of the lot between the front facade of the structure and the front lot line. That should get into the crux of the issue and we can, I'll get with Chad to make sure there wouldn't be any.
Right.
Are there any objections to that, by making that change?
Makes sense to me.
Okay, perfect.
The basic difference is where you've got a vacant lot, you can use those build-two lines, but if you've got a place that's already built on, it's different. So you just have to spell it out.
All right. Thank you for all that work on build-two lines, Chad and.
One more question. Sorry. And you brought this up too, but I just wanted to clarify what you are saying in the, that 27403, build-two lines, that A, so it seems like you're either missing a word or a whole phrase, because it says, "Build-two lines are hereby established from the front parcel boundary, there is no curb." So I think you mean either if there is no curb, or you mean from the curb or the front parcel if there is no curb.
It, it should just be the front parcel boundary. I can, that language can be cleaned up.
So nothing about the curb at all?
No, we're, yeah, we're getting, we're getting rid of, well, we're trying to alleviate the use of the cartway and the right-of-way, just to establish it's got to be on the parcel front.
Okay.
Okay, so staff will, staff will modify the language for yard front and build-two line accordingly.
Thank you.
And I have another, sorry, just to, so, and I think I've asked this before, but I get so confused about it in the borough, because we've talked about parcel boundaries and where they end, because I think we, as Chad talked about, typically outside, like in townships, parcel lines go to the middle of the road, that's not the case in the borough, they often go to the.
So.
Something else.
The, the way that right-of-way historically is, is transferred, if you imagine the, the street being built, if it's, if you own property and it cuts your, it cuts through your and your neighbor's property, in the event that that roadway were ever abandoned, the property would then revert to the ownership original. Sometimes that is to the center line. If it's a platted right-of-way though, often it's to the physical demarcation line for that right-of-way, in which case then there is no, it, it, ownership of the parcel or whatever that right-of-way area is becomes a little bit more challenging. For Gettysburg though, it's, it is pretty well established, and that's usually a problem you run into in areas for redevelopment, where you are looking at abandoning right-of-way to encourage redo, encourage, like, if, if you need additional space for a building or parking lot or something, and then it's like, oh, well, you don't actually own that your neighbor does, because it was all, the roadway came completely from your neighbor's property, you, you never had any land over there to begin with. So those are questions that generally professional surveyor would look at in doing a full title search for the property, and it gets really challenging when the Fs start looking like S's, and then especially being a commonwealth, we have, it gets really interesting prior to the United States, when we're looking at King's Grants and things like that. So for all intents and purposes, the right-of-ways in Gettysburg are clearly demarcated, there were, that front parcel boundary is going to be directly off of the right-of-way boundary and clearly identified as such on the plat. I hope that answers the question.
It does, I guess, I guess I was just thinking about what this would, you know, because Pennsylvania is a weird place where we're saying, even if it, maybe at one time your deed described your property to the middle of the road, you have nothing to do with that. And then our treatment of sidewalks is also odd, because we're saying that might be on your parcel, but we're telling you that you have to make a five-foot sidewalk and fix your sidewalk and do all these things or whatever. But those, is the parcel boundary typically include the sidewalk? I would say, I think it does.
Usually you would not, you'd want the sidewalk to be built in the public right-of-way. If it, I mean, we get into the nuance, yeah, it's on the parcel, but it's within the right-of-way boundary or demarcation. The real challenge we run into at the borough is with our streams and establishing ownership to the center line of the water course. That's, that's more tricky, but it's not something that's, as in a zoning issue.
Okay, well, if you feel confident that this is, there's not going to be a concern with build-two lines and.
No.
Where those are.
I do, I do not anticipate any problems when it, when it comes to these, this language as it relates to standard surveying and development practices.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to a third item that might be less difficult, and that's maximum parking. How do you see us having resolved that?
So staff took away from the, the last conversation that there was concern about having a maximum for residential land uses.
So was that resolved?
In terms of direction from the planning commission, I need some direction.
Oh, you still need direction?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, let's talk about this one, because I, I, I spent a lot of time thinking about this after our meeting last month and worrying about it. So it's the question of how many parking spaces are we permitting a resident to have? And thinking about my own house and houses of people I know, I was a little concerned about the limit of two spaces that we saw, or that's currently in the ordinance. But what do others think? For residential houses, I mean, obviously, residential properties. Go ahead, go ahead.
I can give you a little loophole if you would like.
Okay.
In the event that there is a problem with limiting residential parking opportunities, we could just remove parking maximums as they relate to those, these uses identified right in this top chart.
Right. Okay. Thoughts?
I think my only concern is, I think that the, the only issue I would see is if you're building, like, I think we're encouraging some single-family homes to be potentially turned into multi-unit apartments, just generally within this planning document. And so, you know, I would hate to see livable space be converted to parking, because you want to have, you know, you, you now have four units, you want to make sure you have four large parking spaces. So in my mind, I was thinking, you know, limit it that way, because that way, if I have a parcel, I'm ideally dedicating most of that to housing, obviously that's beyond our control. You know, you could take that same, I could build a yard as, as high as I, you know, as large as I want, right, in a dwelling, not as small as I want, but smaller. So that was my only concern personally. If, if others feel differently, I don't have strong feelings about this. Either way, I think I'd be fine either increasing them or, to John's point, maybe we, we don't dip our toes into talking about parking in residential areas.
Were you trying to say something, Marty? Thanks Nick.
Well, I, I wish it was in SALDO instead of zoning, but, because if it is in zoning, then it can be a headache, but I, I realize the need to have it in zoning, so I'll take the planning director's guidance on that and accept it as, as it is.
Or remove it. He's, I think he's asking us whether we want to just remove it.
I think most of the parking has already been established also, you know, everything's pretty much existing, so I don't know what, what development is going to occur beyond.
Is there any scenario where a home that currently has more than two lots would make some sort of improvement on their property and then be bound to, to?
I mean, any scenario where you, so a change-of-use situation, let's say that there, okay, pizza house, it becomes a house again, they're, they're going to be limited, in this case, two parking spaces for that new construction. New construction being the change-of-use. Is that going to be a problem? Possibly. That's why, in, in reviewing other zoning ordinances, there is often a distinction for residential land uses, given the fact that you want to, well, I don't know, there is often a want to preserve certain rights beyond what you would, what you would see in more high-density housing, or more high-density building, a recognition that detached single-family dwellings, the built environment of having a driveway is different than utilizing on-street parking resources, so.
Right, I support that thinking, yeah. Anyone else? Sarah or John?
I guess I'm not opposed to the loophole that you proposed.
So what, what this would do, what staff is understanding the consensus to be is that for the residential land uses, and if, if it makes more sense that we do, we could also just say for the single-family detached, the single-family semi-detached duplex, or the semi-family, semi-attached townhouse, there is no maximum parking requirement. That would then, that would then alleviate any concerns with, especially when it comes like student housing, building visitor parking spaces that are often going to be used, so just limiting that opportunity to certain classifications of single-family dwellings or residential dwellings.
Is anyone uncomfortable with that as John presented it?
Just striking those first three rows?
Okay, then that's what, we will move on. Thank you, John. All right, then, then, well, maybe they're not. All right, then, then, well, maybe this, they're not as controversial. The next three, there's the West Middle Street, which we have talked at length about, and I believe we did make a clear resolution, but does anyone want to return to that? This is the question about whether West Middle Street belongs in general commercial or residential too. Do I have that right, John? Those are the, the proposal was GC? Or, and, no, we don't have, what, what was the proposal by Four Square and others?
Commercial.
What?
I think it was commercial.
It was general commercial.
All right, so GC from R2.
Yeah, GC.
R2 currently allows offices, but it's clear that maybe some owners or interested parties want greater commercial there. Is that what you're perceiving? Larger retail?
The, so, I mean, in the meetings, the representatives from the church have asked for the ability to have general commercial zoning to improve their land value.
And there was also a question about the properties on the other side of the street going all the way out of town. Does anyone want to bring this one back up?
I mean, we heard from John, he described the number of residential buildings versus commercial and the kinds of commercial uses. And I was convinced that the map is shown as it is, is appropriate. That was my take on it.
Anyone else? Okay, then let's, go ahead.
I, I don't know if there is a right answer, you know. Unfortunately, it's convoluted and complicated problem.
Well, how are you, Marty, you think, I mean, the neighborhood is existing, and yet there, in the middle of the neighborhood are these commercial enterprises. Some are larger than others. So how do we evaluate whether the residential feel is more important than the commercial feel or vice versa?
Right. I, I mean, I, I suppose maybe honestly, it might be more conducive to like NC1 or NC2. Just because I like the idea of mixed-use development, especially along a major thoroughfare, but.
One thing I will note, we did provide for the mixed-use opportunity now in the R2 district. So there are commercial, additional commercial opportunities. That individual property owner may not find that the built environment is conducive to that sort of development. I mean, it's a very, it's a building that doesn't necessarily lend itself to easily be redeveloped into other things in general. So when it comes to those proposals for the individual properties, if there's an opportunity to redevelop it in a manner that makes sense, there's always an opportunity for them to come in for a zoning map amendment. Additionally, it's, there's, you're dealing with speculation for some of this. The anticipation of lowered property values that may not in fact be existing if the zoning map changes were provided.
Yeah, the, the forms would be smaller, I suppose, with R2. That's why I think maybe larger forms, building structures might be appropriate, but with R2 it would be.
Well, that, my suggestion, let's think about this one a little more, knowing that it will certainly resurface, no matter what we do, when council receives it, but this just be another item that we think about over the next month.
One thing you may want to think about as you ponder that over the coming weeks, I mean, existing non-conformities are going to continue, and, and there's going to be, no matter what it's done, there's going to be existing non-conformities. You may want to think about it. Speaking of speculation, you know, if one of those existing commercial uses left, would you want to see that lot be converted into residential? Alternatively, if a block of three or four houses left, would you want to see that developed into a more commercial use?
Good. Thanks for that. That's really helpful.
Hypothetically.
I know we all drive down that road frequently, but maybe over the next weeks, when it's not so cold, we take a walk through that neighborhood to help us answer that question. You walk on it daily, okay. Oh, yeah, you do, you do.
Really, I mean, it's, you've got that weird wireless building. I don't know what they're doing with that. You've got Four Square. You've got the stone, the, like gravestones, and you've got Office of Aging, which is kind of a house, and you've got the podiatrist.
And then the other side of, but the other side of the street.
Sure, the other side of the street is the back of businesses where that red is, but the yellow is all housing.
No, I'm talking about the bank and the reality office.
Oh, further down.
Further down.
Yeah.
All right, if you don't mind, let's, I mean, we, we did resolve this, but I'm just raising it again. And if anyone wants to move it in the NC direction or something, email.
Not suggesting it, I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough one to solve, the same with the Carlisle Street and.
Well, okay, so let's agree, so if anyone has thoughts on that after you review it, maybe email those to John so that we, we'll have that on the agenda if necessary. But then, John, what you were saying goes to the other item, and now we're down to our final two. That is Carlisle Street. And when you mentioned that you added additional uses to the R2 to accommodate things like that people might want to do, there's Ms. Cipperly's question about R2 is residential. Is it appropriate to add those uses into it if it can be resolved by just keeping some areas in an NC district or another kind of district? I know, we've discussed this one as well, but how would you respond to that? What was the motivation? Maybe the two of you could answer this since you were on the ad hoc committee, of making the R2 have more uses. I don't know. I, I don't know if we've actually had that question answered.
The initial proposal from the working group was not to have the commercial uses happening in the R2.
Okay.
So it was, I, I'll, I'll reiterate, the focus was to provide housing opportunities.
So did we add those in at a meeting that now I'm forgetting?
That was, so at the last meeting, it was a discussion point to enable the, the mixed-use form, but still being mindful of having high-tensity commercial opportunity, activities occurring next to residential would be potentially problematic. In proposing the R2, the proposed, it was as proposed to discourage commercial opportunities in these areas. That was the point, so that these opportunities for businesses, while they are, they afford the property owner additional benefits to the ownership, they also limit the ability for housing in that it becomes more profitable for the property owner to have a commercial land use. That was the justification. The, where we've gotten to now is to have some form of commercial activities beyond just office uses occurring in the R2 district. In addition, I think we have the funeral parlor being in the Carlisle Street area. It was the only non-conforming use that was, it's currently existing for that area. So it's something, it's something to, well, I think, let me take that back. It was the only non-conforming use as it relates to the change in district. Looking at the proposal for Carlisle. Put this right next to, maybe I'll do it. The current zoning of the area, we have one, it's just a one strip of parcels, having the RO residential office district use. It was just something that, from my understanding, that the group looked at and thought that residential would be preferred for this area, especially given the nature of the, the college area and I guess the ripple effect that are, were being relayed to the commission and general public when this was initially discussed in the summer. I'm open for recommendations on it, but at some point, we do have to, I think this follows well into the discussion of housing, the need for housing, is if it's something that the planning commission wants to see more housing opportunities, recognizing that that means you are going to have to discourage other opportunities, because residential just doesn't happen. It, it's generally going to be less advantageous for the developer compared to those commercial or even the higher dense, higher intensity business opportunities. I mean, office space alone, your square foot rents, it's just so much higher. It, it has a way of crowding out residential opportunities.
So this is one of those areas where because we've dealt with this over months and months, it makes it hard to remember all the decisions that we made throughout. And can you remind us, or maybe Nick, you were jumping in. Did we make, did we go too quickly in amending the uses in the R2 because we wanted to solve some problems? Would it have been advantageous to, and is it still advantageous, to just change the districts instead of, you know, adding those uses?
I thought the only thing we added into R2 was that, that kind of general, it was the gen.
That's really the mixed-use general.
Mixed use, that was the change we made, wasn't it?
That was at the last meeting, but at some earlier meeting, apparently more.
General commercial had been added, yeah.
Yeah.
Before we kind of had the, we thought about mixed use. I mean, the way I saw it, I agree with John, I think in the, in the committee meetings, we really were focusing residential for most of this R2 area. My, my personal perspective is adding that mixed-use residential and commercial was a response to both questions around Carlisle Street, right? This idea that along Carlisle, you might want to see some low-impact, like coffee shops, things like that. Additionally, some of these questions around Middle Street, right, West Middle Street, that we're just talking about, like, you know, that there are some businesses there, right? There, there are clearly, we, we just named a few, and similarly, East Middle, there's some. So I think it was kind of an overture for that. With this mixed-use being that kind of compromise of allowing for some of those commercial uses that it seems like people were wanting to see in these areas that were zoned R2, while trying to still have the bulk of it be residential.
I hear that. What about the fact that the two places you named, West Middle and Carlisle, are notably different than the R2 neighborhoods of like Stratton and Barlow, aren't they? That's, that's the worry I have, that, why don't we just change the, I mean, is it possible that we just move those two corridors into a district that's more permissible, permissible, where commercial is more permissible and retain the residential quality of the other neighborhoods?
Staff would recommend not necessarily creating a new mixed-use district in that case, looking at the NC1.
Right. Yeah, I don't mean to create a new district.
Yeah, I think the challenge there that I see, Charles, is I, if you look at NC1 compared to Old Town, there's like maybe five things you can do in Old Town that you can't do in NC1. Like NC1 is pretty permissive for commercial uses. It's like restaurant without a drive-through is one of them, for instance. And so like, that, that'd be my challenge. I get what you're saying, and I get what John's saying. So it's like, I don't, and this is my personal opinion, like, I don't see it making sense for these areas to be NC1, just because if you look at uses for NC1, a lot of commercial uses. But at the same time, what is, what is that, like R2 but with that mixed-use, right? Is it, and in my mind, you'd have to make a new one, which I think to John's point, and I don't disagree, like, do we want to make another district, right? So that, it's challenging for those ones. It certainly is challenging.
What do others think? Well, can we, can we have a little more, and then I'll come back to you, Sue, just a little more up here and then. Okay, but did anyone want to react to what Nick said, and then I'm going to ask Sue what her comment is?
Just, you know, I was looking at this comp plan. Residential development should be targeted to a density of around four dwelling units per acre for this West Lincoln, Carlisle Street. And I, I don't think any of those lots are anywhere near a quarter of an acre along Carlisle Street. So I think they got it wrong on the comp plan there. Just thought I'd point that out.
Thank you. John or Sarah on this topic of NC1, R2? Or wait and think more for our final meeting on it? All right, Sue, did you have anything? What did you want to say there? Briefly, please. Thank you.
If you look at the outlines of the buildings on those parcels, they're, they're much bigger parcels and much bigger buildings than in the adjacent R2 zone. And that Carlisle Street zone, it's always been treated the same way as Baltimore Street, with a certain amount of commercial, like a restaurant or a museum, you can have a bed and breakfast there. So it seems like somebody decided that because we're trying to do all this residential, that maybe those big buildings on Carlisle should be turned into apartments or, you know. I can't figure it out, but those are a lot of 1800s buildings. A lot of them are huge, the kind where you had a large family and then you maybe you had some help that lived in the back of it. And it doesn't make sense to me to expect to just take all that away. And it is a corridor, people walk there from the college and from the neighborhood, and it would be a place you could have a restaurant, a cafe, and there's other uses listed in there. Why don't you just make it like Baltimore? Rather than trying to say, well, we took away those uses from that area, now we have to put those into the R2. That's what's happening, because Funeral Home is now in R2. And so is Motel. And other things that are in that strip, but they're not in R2. That's why I said make it the historic corridor NC2. And it just makes sense. Otherwise, you're really opening a can of worms other here, but also other places in town.
Thank you, Sue. And you, you know, that is what I was trying to explain, but I also take Nick's point.
Well, I guess my only thought to that, I mean, that's not what that, Carlisle is now, right? I mean, Carlisle has a funeral home. What other businesses?
Two funeral homes, isn't it?
Two. Like what, like it's, it's residential. I mean, it's, I'm trying to think of what's down. And I, I appreciate that we might want to see more, and I think that's where I was, my thought was with that mixed-use. But like, I get what you're saying, Sue, that they're different size, they're bigger, they're, they're comparable to Baltimore, but that is a very different street than Baltimore. I mean, that, there, when you're walking down that street, there's, there's no, like, it's not commercial. I mean, there's funeral homes, but other than that.
There are, in the past, bed and breakfast, there's privately rented places. There's a.
Parcel.
One of, the college has an academic building. And to just say this could all be residential instead.
So if we gave ourselves this month to think about this one as well and walk the street again, and, and again, this has been raised and we have discussed it, I appreciate, but it's still lingering. How hard would it be to give you information that could make a change after we come back, if we needed to, about a map change?
I would recommend not to think about it like that.
Okay.
Just make the document that you want to present to council.
No, I'm just saying, what would we have to do to tell you, hey, we have come back? Well, we won't know. We won't know until we're back. But does anyone want to make any immediate change now, or, or should we think about the next, this over the next weeks? Marty?
Yeah, let's, let's hold off until next meeting, I think. That sounds good.
I mean, I'm, I'm interested in considering, looking at the NC districts for either the Old Town parts that Mrs. Michael was talking about or this part of Carlisle. But I'm thinking about the, I mean, to me, it looks like R2 is, you know, has a very limited ability for commercial uses. And the lodging uses, you know, I, we think we changed because of conversations that we've had in the last few months. And I, you know, I'm happy to see Motel not be a special exception anywhere in the R2. But I was thinking about the bed and breakfast, which is a use throughout all of those, except for R1. It's in the residential and, and commercial districts. And I was trying to remember if that was part of our discussion about when we decided to try to limit vacation rentals. And I feel like we've talked about how bed and breakfast have that residential component to them and maybe allow someone who has a house that probably doesn't, you know, we don't have huge typically, except for you, Charles, huge families and these big houses. But I think it allows us to use those big stately homes in the borough that probably are too large for today's family size. But you could have a couple in there, and then they could make a commercial use out of it, but still be a residential and a commercial use while maintaining the kind of charm of the historic structure, hopefully. But, so anyways, I was, I was just thinking, you know, as far as lodging and commercial uses in not just Carlisle, but the R2, I don't really have a problem with some of those, you know, the possibility of a, of a small commercial use or a cafe or a, you know, in the, those other R2. you know, in the, those other R2 areas as well, which I think also, as you said, already have some of those, they already have bed and breakfast on Hanover Street and some of those places that are already R2. So that's my take on it.
Let's take the next weeks and return to this one, it's certainly one of our items. So now we have two, you know, the walking through the two corridors, West Middle and also Carlisle. And then thinking about the industrial one more time. So that's actually three of the six. And our final thing, you've brought it up, relates to Old Town and the move to NC1. I know we've discussed this as well, but we got another appeal tonight. So do you want to say anything about that, John, before we maybe consider it?
Once again, when it comes to the changes with, with these, the downzoning, so to speak, it was driven in part by increasing residential opportunities. The big impetus for NC1, my understanding, was to find compatibility with the Elm Street District by removing that overlay district, encouraging those commercial opportunities in certain locations, and then ensuring that they, that the residential opportunities aren't being crowded out by the very, I guess, intensive, the multitude of commercial opportunities that are permitted in the Old Town District. Old Town, it's your downtown core, historically, that is where commercial activity happens. So everything that's not automobile-oriented is going to be permitted in the Old Town District. The changes, I mean, as they relate to the Old Town, staff feels that, I mean, that yes, there are limits, but the resulting, the resulting development changes that will occur as a result of the zoning ordinance, map amendments, should be positive in conformity with the comprehensive plan. The real issues we initially heard were specifically about the Elm Street area. That's where we have this interplay with the properties that were Old Town now, we have some that are going to be NC1, a few that are going to be R2, recognizing that they, those properties would be potentially at risk if there were additional commercial development occurring in them or near them. The areas of budding the Old Town that were changed to R2 on the eastern side, once again, I mean, these are your smaller, you have these smaller parcels along Middle Street, the ones on High. There, you have right over here, actually, they're larger, single-family detached dwellings. Even the R2 district could be a bit of a stretch, they're almost more of an R1 development pattern. But right now, they're Old Town. So that, that would be a pretty substantial change for the, some of these blocks if they actually had the commercial opportunities happening. So recognizing the ability for Borough to encourage residential, that's where, where these changes came from. The, the, the real problems that are going to be, I guess, anticipated from these changes are going to, the problems for the property owners are, it will be a limit in terms of certain commercial activities, but the property will still have value. We're not recommending substantial downzoning. So in the areas where it is going to a higher-density residential, it's still, those areas are built for residential. Where it's these mixed use, you see they have larger parcel boundaries generally than the Old Town core. They are still with walkable and provide for the urban fabric of Gettysburg. So it does make sense to maintain them as some sort of mixed use, that's where the NC1 is coming from.
Thanks, John. Yes, Ms. Michaels. Could you go up, could you go up here, just so we keep it, and if you could be brief so that we can discuss it and then conclude? Thank you.
I think there is a difference between the properties that have been proposed for NC1. When, when there is a structure sitting right on the main artery, as there is on East York, and maybe on West York, I don't know that area as well, you're talking about the property that is, is specifically right on the main thoroughway and has on-street parking on both sides. And it is in effect, you know, a continuation, you're only talking about two blocks from the square, one block from the square, really. On the other side, on the east-west side, you're talking about two blocks. So those properties have different issues than the ones that don't abut a main artery in terms of the kind of structures they are and the upkeep and the, the traffic and pollution and noise and so forth that makes them a lot less usable for residential than for commercial. And I, so those properties, to me, are, would be at risk of not being maintained, not being usable because they're not going to be good rentals for residential.
And if I could ask, how many are there on that one block?
I'm not sure, do you know that, John, how many there are?
Well, that's what, I'm on, you know, Google Street View, there's a church, there's General Lee's Buffet, and there's one, there's like a sign in front of one on Google Street View that I can't tell what kind of business it is. Other than that, it all, to me, is, looks residential.
No, there, well, you're right, General Lee's is there, there's a hairdresser there, a beauty shop, there is Gettysburg Connect, not Connection, Gettysburg, some newspaper office there, their companion. There is a childcare associated with St. James. There is the cares resident, the cares office shelter, that's on one side of the street. On the other side of the street, there is a Airbnb on the corner, the 100 North Stratton Street. There was a bookkeeper in the bottom of the building next to that, but I'm not sure if she's still there or not. There's currently, yeah, currently, there is not, but there was a flower shop in the next building. Then there are two, there's two single-family homes. One has a home office in it, and on the other side, there's an apartment. And then the rest of the block, I think you would be right in saying is probably residential.
Sure, and I guess my thought is, all of those uses you listed, except for short-term vacation rental, are allowed in NC1. So I, I don't see, if you look at the use table between NC1 and Old Town, there's maybe five things that you can do in Old Town that you can't do in NC1. Like farmer's market, public market, dwell, eating with a drive-through, but you can get eating without a drive-through. And then form and function, there's a big difference between NC1 and Old Town. And that Old Town can go up to five stories, it looks like, depending on the height, four or five. NC1 is three, but I would say, you know, nothing, nothing here is really that tall. So I, I appreciate what you're saying in terms of wanting to make sure it fits with the existing use and how it is mixed use, it's residential, commercial. I just don't see how NC1 limits that, those uses.
So, I appreciate that it does have a lot of uses with the mixed use listed. However, if you look at, if you look at the map and you look at the area that is now Old Town, and you think about in the future in terms of expansion of the Old Town area, you're not, those buildings can't be used as you have it right now for commercial, they can only be used for mixed use.
No, I, I don't, I don't believe that is true, from the way that I am reading the ordinance. If you, in the use of NC1, in, in commercial uses for NC1, I mean, there's, there's a laundry list in terms of how it is with, with Old Town, right? They both have bedding use, they both can do brew pub, they both can do childcare center, they both can do community service, convenience stores, one, that Old Town can do that NC1 can't. Drinking place, eating place with a drive-through, that's Old Town, not NC1. Eating place without a drive-through, that's both. You've got vape shop are both, you know, event venue, both. Farmer's market is one that you can't do. Funeral home, both, you know, general commercial services, both. Grocery store is just Old Town. Child, group childcare, both. Long-term care facility, that's one. But, you know, there's a lot of uses that you can do in NC1.
Right, but my question is, and I thought that I understood this, and maybe I understand it incorrectly, was you had to have a mixed-use building, meaning you had to have residential on the top floor, you couldn't have-
R2.
Is that right?
That's if you're utilizing the general, commercial, mixed-use building as a land use, which in the NC1, you don't have to do that. You can have multiple, one of the quirks of the zoning ordinance is you're allowed to have multiple principal land uses on one parcel. So you could have the microbrewery and the, oh, just, yeah, you could have just a event venue and a microbrewery, that could be it. Or you could have residential. Or you could do the general, commercial, mixed-use building as it is a permitted form. But generally, I don't anticipate approving changes of use for that specific land use in the NC1 district.
So are you saying you can have a purely commercial building there, or you have to have a mixed use?
You can have a purely commercial, commercial building, yes.
Okay, as a right, not as a special exception.
If it's one of those commercial, there's a limited number of commercials.
Well, it's a lot of specified ones, and then there is that general, commercial uses, which is like fifth down right now in that, that is by right in NC1, and that has a larger definition, that's a lot of ones as well. So I, I would say, there's a lot of named ones, and then there's that general, commercial, which is even more. It's, I mean, personally, NC1 for me, when we were talking about it, I think there's been some commercial creep. But to this specific point of can there be commercial uses in NC1, the way that I read the ordinance, there's a lot of commercial uses permitted in NC1.
And they're permitted in terms of the entire building, it doesn't have to be mixed use.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's only R2 where we've really, the, the, the general thing in R2 where you want commercial, the biggest available uses is that mixed use where it's residential, commercial. NC1, a lot of other commercial uses.
All right. Thank you, John, Nick, for clarifying that, and thank you, Ms. Michaels, for coming again. So it sounds like out of the six, we have three items, maybe?
There was one thing I wanted to say about, because I was also trying to go through the chart of zoning uses and comparing the different districts, and it does get, it's difficult to do that, but I think Nick pointed out that, you know, some of the things that are permitted in NC1 versus Old Town. I was also looking at NC3 because one of my thoughts was, maybe, maybe a solution would be to bring NC3 more towards town on York. But then, out of curiosity, I like, I think Nick made a good point, which I agree with, but it made me realize, and I was just curious about this, that a drinking place is permitted in all those places except for NC3? And I was just, do you remember why we would have done that? Because it seems like NC3, I don't know why NC3 would not have a drinking place, but like NC1, am I seeing that right?
Yeah, I agree, I don't, I don't get it, but. Because I mean, what is, because NC3 is really just like-
I mean, we're talking about bars, right?
Well, I think, yeah, I think that the issue we were trying to get with that was encouraging restaurants as opposed to bars in those locations, as they are more auto-oriented. But if that's something that there's a consensus to have that drinking place as an R, that district staff wouldn't be, that wouldn't be an issue for staff.
Could I always use more bars, right?
Is that what you're recommending?
Yes.
Was there any discussion about asking staff to include drinking place in NC3? All right, there's no objection to that. That was a surprise, but good.
More bars.
Thank you. All right, so of the six that I started with at this meeting, it sounds like three are still on the table for potential revisit at our meeting in February. And those include the Carlisle Street corridor, the Middle Street corridor, and perhaps related to the industrial sector. But it sounds like we resolved the other three. Are there other items related to the rezoning that any council, that any commission member wants to bring up now?
I have one that I would like to bring up.
Go ahead.
So this is specifically on the map, in terms of the zoning map. If we look at the West Lincoln, or just Lincoln and Carlisle, that intersection. So on the northeast part of that intersection is an existing motel that I believe at one point was R2. And then we had that specific discussion about allowing motels in R2 with the thought process that most, 99% of parcels in R2 do not qualify for motel. It's really just if the existing motels were to be sold, allowing them to be used as motels without too much of a huge construction project. So to me, I don't know when we got switched with that northeast corner there on Lincoln and Carlisle to not be R2, just that motel property. Because again, I, like, in my recollection, the whole reason we included motels in R2 was simply to allow that one and then the other three that are currently in R2 to be, you know, continue to be used. So I, I don't know if it's a big, and maybe I missed something, I definitely, I was not here for two meetings, so maybe there was some conversation around why that one, you know, got moved to R1. But that's just one little thing I saw.
That seems like, that's a good point.
Yeah, that was not, that wasn't changed by staff. So I mean, that may have been a, I guess, a mapping error that can, that hasn't been addressed. We can, if it makes sense, we can change that parcel to R2 or to make it conforming to whatever the Carlisle Street corridor would be.
Let's wrap that into that discussion, our last one on February.
Sure.
But we, we removed motel from R2, though.
Not currently.
No, it's special exception.
Special exception, special exception, right.
Yeah, again, I think with the understanding that just by the nature of most of the parcels, you can't really add motels. I guess someone could buy up a fudge.
All right, so let's add that to that, like a sort of a tag to that last one of our last three items. Other comments about where we are or about what you've seen? Okay, then, as far as announcement goes, our next planning commission meeting is two, no, is what did we say? Tuesday, February 18th at 7:00 PM. As far as announcement goes, John, do you want to start with anything you know that we're going to be seeing soon? Of course, there's one that we are anticipating, but maybe you could tell us when or anything else that the commission wants to happen in our minds.
Unfortunately, I have nothing to add with regards to the Gettysburg Station project. Once we have the documents in a state where we can present them to you, we will be in contact with you. We will also be making sure we have adequate paper copies of those plans. The, so we're going to be, staff, Borough staff is having discussions with the Borough Council next Monday regarding 2025 priorities. We're going to be focusing a lot on, my staff will be looking at having a ticketing ordinance in place for code compliance and a, getting to a point where we can have a functional sidewalk ordinance that's realistic for the conditions of our current sidewalks, while also having maintenance schedule or some, some, some way that we get to a better sidewalk conditions throughout the borough. That's what staff's going to be focusing on. Once we get to a point where the zoning ordinance is in a recommendation state, we would hope that that's in February, that, that will be in that rezoning process with Phase 3 of our overall project. And that's where we have all the municipalities' planning code provisions for public hearings, very timeline-oriented. The goal would then be to have an ordinance draft document approved by Borough Council in the spring. After which time, or beginning when they're nearing completion, we would have earnest discussions with Borough Engineer on getting to a process for the S Aldo. Additionally, we are going to be, as staff, looking into updates for the Historic Architecture Review Board's design guidelines. for the Historic Architectural Review Board's design guidelines. That's something that won't hopefully be taking up too much staff capacity bandwidth as there are grant opportunities for that specific ton of historic preservation work. But the SADO and to a lesser extent, those design guidelines will be playing into the next year. SADO naturally being a very technical process. So we probably will not have a steering committee like we did with the zoning ordinance. It would be more of a, getting, getting direct updates from the Borough Engineer and just having a series of meetings with the Planning Commission. The, in terms of development applications, there is hopefully something going to be coming with regards to a townhome development near, on Water Street. But that is in the very preliminary phases now. And they, they ran into challenges with staff, with creating adequate parking that meets our land development code. The, other than, yeah, I'm trying to think, other than that, we do anticipate having the land development plan for the Welcome Center come back to the Planning Commission at some point in the near future. They're going through the process of what's called a Section 106 review to obtain federal funds. You have to ensure that you are not damaging historic properties and damaging registered properties, structures and whatnot. It's a very in-depth process, but one that, once they're complete, then access to this congressional funds will become available. And we will then be in a rush to revise the previous subdivision land development plan approval as it relates to the inclusion of an elevator space. So it's, it's one of those things. We'll go through the process. It should be a relatively quick one as compared to the Gettysburg Station project. But that is something to look forward to. Other than that, the, I'm trying to think. We have had development commence with the two other larger projects last, from last year. The Mini Golf, Gettysburg Golf is moving forward. If you drive by, you can see it quite clearly. That is on track for completion as scheduled. The Spectra Coat, they should have been moving along. I was, I'm going to be looking into that one probably in the coming weeks. They, with the temperatures, I don't think they're able to get it all the way done at this time. But other than that, the library subdivision will probably be coming at some point, library subdivision land development plan at some point as well. But otherwise, if there are any specific things that you would like to look at as a commission, we will be, we're already at that point where we're going to be looking to redo the comp plan here in a few years. So that's something that's got to be fresh again. If there are any studies that would be beneficial to the Planning Commission, like a housing inventory study or likewise, we can make those requests to the Borough Council for funding opportunities in the next fiscal year. Generally, it's been a while since I've done a housing study, but the last one was in 2019 and it was about $26,000. But Bovin Research, they, that's who, a firm I've previously used on a few occasions. They're, they provide really good product. The issue that you run into with those surveys is they become outdated very quickly. So we have to make sure we're, with the cost, making sure we're utilizing that data for something positive. So we'll probably, with, with the comp plan reaching its tenure in 2029, earnest begin the comp plan process in 2028, maybe even as late 2027. So that's the long-term things. But in the short term, we'll have a few things coming, but nothing guaranteed at this time.
Thank you for that very nice survey of what we have to look forward to in 2025. Real briefly, and then I want to move on to conclude this meeting. But number one, with the comp plan, it seems to me that the dream of regional comp planning has not been achieved with Strabane and Cumberland. So I wonder if that's something we should think about as we finish out this plan and start the new one. Some of the collaborations or way of thinking about regional planning just haven't, as far as I can tell, really happened.
I'll be bitter when it comes to regional planning. We only have control over the Borough of Gettysburg. There is clear benefit from regional planning from a county level. It would be something I would like to see. We'll, we'll be having discussions with the county on how to move forward with that type of document. But with what, with the development increases we've seen in Strabane and Cumberland Township in the, in this, in this planning period and how it's not necessarily meeting the objectives of the future land use mapping, it does create some concerns as to the, the real practicality of having a multi-jurisdictional plan. Not saying it's, it's necessarily a bad thing, but it, from a planning practice, it, it's easier to control things that you actually have control of, if that makes sense.
All right. Well, I'm sure we'll talk more about that. And then the second one is, if you had any opportunities for us as a planning commission to do like continuing education, we had, had a couple things at DCED, I think, organized. And somebody came down here and we learned things that were helpful. I'm sure that you would get volunteers to do something like that.
Well, that, that's something we can definitely look at doing. Post, once we get to pass this rezoning effort, it would be great to have just, not even, I mean, we could go into the finer details of the meeting, meeting Roberts Rules trainings, things like that, or even into the, I guess, in-depth planning issues there of the day. As, as a certified planner, I'm working with Pennsylvania Chapter on the 2025 conference that'll be occurring in Harrisburg in October. So we will be having, as a, as a profession, we'll be having quite a bit of materials in, in the run-up to that. So I'll probably be able to provide some, a better update this summer on, on training opportunities that'll be nearby, training opportunities that we can have happen here.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Additional comments from Planning Commission members? We'll start with Marty, John, Sarah, Nick.
Just a thank you to the folks here. I mean, I know it's a lot, but I certainly appreciate the input.
And I'll just quickly say, when we review this draft that John has in front of us, noting the three items or more that we talked about today that are not resolved entirely perhaps, and then also typos, of course, or anything you want to forward to John, just send him an email directly and then that'll all be on the agenda for our February meeting. Is there any final public comment?
Just a quick question. The meeting, next meeting is Tuesday, February 18th, is that for us?
Yeah, President's Day is that Monday, so that's why it's Tuesday.
Tuesday, 18th, okay, not the 21st.
That's right. Any final public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
John moved and Marty seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? And this meeting adjourns at 9:00 PM exactly. Good night, everyone. Thanks again.